Okay, good evening. Seeing Quorum, the Chair opens up the Mashpee Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, January 4th, 2017.
I'm gonna try that again. Good evening. Seeing Quorum, the Chair is going to open up the Mashpee Planning Board meeting of Wednesday, January 14th, 2017, 7:00 PM, here at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts. We'd like to extend a Happy New Year to everybody who's watching. Our first order of business is to stand. I invite everybody to stand and recite with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for our to stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just like to remind everybody that we're being videographed and recorded, and if you have the opportunity to address the Board, please do so at the mic. We have some minutes in here from December 21st.
There were no changes since they were sent out to us?
Okay, I would accept a motion to approve as presented.
I think a motion to approve as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Special permit is applicant is Lake Ave Holdings LLC, Knockabout Beer Company LLC. Location is 13 Lake Avenue. Requested approval of special permit modification regarding external changes to approved microbrewery building to a patio area behind the building. On December 7th, 2016, this Board voted that a public hearing requirement would be waived. And on the 21st, we looked at some conceptual plans and we gave an approval. In your packet is a special permit modification that a town planner has prepared. I'd like to, I'm gonna recognize the project proponent. Did you see this special permit?
I did. Peter Myrna with Knockabout, I saw it earlier today. And in your packet, you have the plans as requested, the updated, the special permit modification, the level discussed last week and the other meetings that we had with Historic Planning and Design. So we have removed the metal roof, we have removed the windows on the right side of the building, we have the cupola still with the standing seam roof, and we have the color and the front windows have stayed as we just said. Site plan, there's no changes to that. No issues with any changes on that front. Seems like the special permit modification that Tom drafted covers all of that. We're pretty good to go on our end. If you have any questions, we can go over anything the Boards would like.
So the current plan is a slight modification to the patio area?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Last time, you're seeing there in green, that's the disturbed space keeping us under that thousand square foot of disturbed, new disturbed area that are noticed for tent outlines. So we're still within compliance of that, since we're around 500, maybe something square.
Tom, do you want to take us through the special permit modification?
Sure. Fairly standard is a description of the proposal. A note that since the original permit, the ownership has changed. Owned by Knockabout, or Lake Avenue Holdings LLC. It had been Sagamore, Sagamore Realty. Modifications are minus. Site plan change, along with extensive changes to the floor plan, exterior design of the building. Jurisdiction, it's issued, this decision will be issued subject to the zoning as it existed on June 15, 2016, when the original special permit was issued. That's the way the law works on that. The application is made to the Town Clerk on December 6th. At your December 7th meeting, you voted that the changes did not require a public hearing. On the 21st, you reviewed the proposed revised plans, requested a number of changes be made, and those have been made, and you continued review till tonight. On December 20th, plans are reviewed and recommended for approval by Design Review and subject to approval by Historic District Commission and recommended for approval by Plan Review. December 21st, you reviewed, I'm sorry, they were reviewed by the Mashpee Historic District Commission, would sign a certificate appropriative, subject to the following conditions. First, the upper level windows proposed for the south side of the building are not approved, and as you see on the plans, those have been removed. Do the reduced sized left front windows are approved, and those are the little three on the left-hand side of the front. The roof shall be asphalt shingles. Plans have been changed to show that, rather than the standing seam metal roof. Proposed cupola may have a standing seam metal roof. The proposed board and batten siding on the building front is approved, and the building wall color cranberry sauce wood stain is approved. January 4th, Board voted to make the following findings, granted special permit modification, authorizing changes to the project. Series of findings just relate to the property, size, location. No new development on the site, aside from this slight increase in the size of the proposed patio and associated regrading. Here it is, since the approval, original special property ownership been transferred to Sagamore, from Sagamore Bridge Realty to Lake Avenue Holdings. For the project site, scenario mapped by Mass Natural Heritage and its regulations, there's minimal additional disturbance proposed by letter dated May 24, 2016. Natural, oh, there's a little typo there. Natural heritage endangered species, as the term project will not result in prohibited take. Project was approved by the Conservation Commission, with standard conditions as being on June 9th. The proposed enlargement of the patio area here, as was noted, falls within the Permitted Rivers Act disturbance area allowed by the Commission and its decision. The amount of disturbances within that. Number 6, December 20th, Design Review and Plan Review Committee is reviewed and recommended approval of project modifications. December 21st, Historic District Commission reviewed and approved the project modification with conditions with which the applicant has conformed, based on the foregoing findings, planning board finds modified project does consist of the state, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Boilerplate, the findings you have to make. And relative to conditions, next page, five. Number one, construction of the project shall be done only in accordance with the following modified plans hereby approved by the Planning Board, a three-sheet site plan set entitled Site Development Plan Set for Knockabout Beer Company LLC. Number 13 Lake Avenue Mashpee, Massachusetts, dated April 13, 2016, as revised December 15, 2016, by Bracken Engineering Incorporated. I believe there was some discussion about changing that April 13th date, but it didn't come in that way. It did have the revision dates on it, and so rather than put Peter through a lot of last-minute stuff with Bracken, I indicated to him that that's probably okay, and that's the way I wrote it up in the decision. Proposed building is depicted on a four-sheet plan set entitled New Edition Remodeling for Knockabout Beer Company, 13 Lake Avenue Mashpee, Mass., dated January 3, 2017, by Kato Bay Design LLC. It had come in dated 2016, and that's the last-minute change that's been made by then. So it's now, reads that way. Approved, approval of the special permit modifications conditioned on conformance with the terms of the Certificate of Appropriateness approved by the Mashpee Historic District Commission on December 21st, 2016, and those conditions were listed previously. Number three, the proposed cupola should not be internally lit. As mentioned, that was an issue that came up with Design Review, and I believe it also came up with Historic, but I don't remember that, it wasn't specifically put in as a condition, so, but put that in there, and that was something that the applicant had agreed to in any case. All conditions placed under the original special permit approved shall remain in effect, except as modified by this decision. Again, we're into boilerplate here, all conditions amount with the land, binding on the applicant's accessors and title. No building or occupancy permits may be issued while there exists any substantial violation of these conditions of the special permit as modified. And then prior to the issuance of building permit for the project, applicant provide the Board and the Mashpee Building Inspector with copies of this special permission modification as recorded with Bronson Connery, Register of Deeds, on the booking page which is recorded. Item six, expiration, extension, modification, that's boilerplate, basically processed too. Applies the plan further if that was necessary, and then signature and filing. And this not being a public hearing type process, there's no appeal period, and so the Board, if it approves the project tonight, can have one member sign the decision, signature notarized. I can file the decision tomorrow with the Town Clerk, and once she's signed off, that she's received it, it will be ready to go for recording. One note is that the Historic District Commission Certificate of Appropriateness, which was issued on the 21st, is subject to a 20-day appeal period, which hasn't run yet. So just for the applicant to keep that in mind, it's a separate process from your process here, but that'll need to wait another week, I guess, before anything can be done.
Our plan is to wait that period, get that taken care of, and then be ready to file everything with the Clerk.
Yep.
Just to be official, for the minutes Rob is sitting on this matter?
Yes. Yeah, that's the way I've written it up. And I correctly guessed that Member Kuherian would be absent, so it says that. I had originally thought that Dave was here last time, and Dave Whedon corrected me on that, and I thank him for that, because I had written up that Dave Kuherian was voting on this, not Rob, but I looked for the minutes, and I said, "Wait a second, Jen says he wasn't here either," so. Fix that up. So it all reads correct.
So Charlie, do you have any comments?
No.
Any comments from the project proponent? You're fine with this? Any comments from Board members?
No. Looks good.
So I'd accept a motion to approve the special permit modification number one as presented.
So be.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or nays? Okay, it's unanimous. All right, so.
We have one original here that can end up going to the registry. Joe's your vice chairman, if you want to let Joe do it.
Yes. Would you like to sign this document? Have to notarize your signature? Are you signing it voluntarily for its stated purpose?
Ah, yes, I am.
Okay.
There's no bear involved in this, is there?
Look at the twist marks.
You better send us a grand opening invite.
Okay, so now where?
Mine's red, I can't do this in red.
Okay.
That's purple.
I have like a brown one in my car.
Do you?
Yeah, because, you know, owners in schools, they sometimes, you know, different colored pens for stuff.
Yeah, I saw, but picked it all up with the appropriate.
Do you mind doing the?
That's Joe, right?
Do you mind signing the plans?
I'll do that.
I just feel funny notarizing his signature and signing that.
Now, can notaries notarize themselves?
No. No one that they're like related to or have like any type of financial interest, you know, with? That would, that would like defeat the purpose of the notary, right? It's kind of like, err. But I guess lawyers, is it lawyers? Lawyers don't have to keep a book. I have to keep a book, but lawyers don't have to keep a book.
So that's your notary?
That's my notary book.
That's pretty cool.
Man, all the, I mostly use it in Yarmouth, so I have all the selectmen's signatures in here. The problem is, is when somebody doesn't sign, you have a hole. You're like, wait a minute. See, I don't, and I don't think lawyers need to have their signature notarized.
I tell you, maybe not.
Because two of the selectmen in Yarmouth are lawyers, and they're constantly the ones that don't sign my book.
Yeah.
They finally do. It just, I think it just looks funny. Oh, they like, they take an oath, they can't even speed. They're done, you know? People are so excited about this microbrewery.
We are very excited.
It's unbelievable.
Well, it said the big story came out in the Cape Cod Magazine, too.
Oh, great.
It's just awesome.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that too.
Hand crabs.
I like the idea of the metal roof, but.
I did too, but. But for a barn look, that would have been something, you know?
Yeah, thank you.
Up in New Hampshire, you say. Yeah, I did my boo from Cedar. And when I was doing it, it was in the eighties, they had a tariff. I started out paying $200 a square. By the time I finished, I was doing it, me and my friend, I had 27 squares. It was $480.
Whoa.
The tariff cut, because they come from Canada. Makes them a nice day. Because when you buy them, they say 14 inches.
Thank you guys, really appreciate it.
Good luck with your project.
New year at your place next year.
That's right, that'll be fun. I can walk home from there. You could probably, if you wanted to.
Well, maybe after a few, you make me to ride, though.
You may have to.
Trust me.
Al, if I could get some of those miniature plan sets for the file, all I've got is the bad ones.
How many do you need?
Many is I can get. You're gonna end up getting one of the big ones.
Let's move right on.
All right, so.
They're all the same.
Revegetation plan for Windtime Point, Red Cedar Road. All right, so. There's the plan.
That's all there is.
Oh, for the modification?
Yeah, yeah. Original plan had other details.
Are we happy with this?
I am, I am. I like the.
I'm not good at landscaping plans, I'm really not good at hand-drawn ones. I'm like.
Well, the only thing I see that's different.
It's existing, 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 okay.
He originally sent us this. And it showed an irrigation, see the mole shot across the road?
Okay.
They were going to irrigate that. And I don't see the.
There's already a, the water line is on inside, there's a hydrant inside the.
No, no, the hydrant is for town water. The irrigation, irrigation is done with wells.
All right, so basically, it's proposed, there's two.
This looks like two new trees, and that's.
Two new trees.
Yeah, that's all they did. The proposed tree here, and a proposed tree here. One here, and one here.
Now, did we have any condition that they had to replace the trees one to one?
I doubt we did, right?
Usually that's what we ask.
Three or four?
I think it's four. I mean.
When we got the restoration photos, there was only two that were in the pits.
Yeah, but then there was that other one that was damaged, and we said they could take it down, so three.
But they had to replace it.
But there was already one taken down, though, right, or two? Somebody took them down a couple of years ago, right?
Yeah.
There was a couple taken down.
But they had nothing to do with that, but they're the property owners now, they should. I thought, though, we said every.
We're replacing.
A hundred foot, yeah.
Hundred-foot-high white pines, eight to 10-foot-high spruce is here to the side.
They'll grow. They'll grow.
Yeah, I like proof spruces, aren't they?
I'm, yeah, I'm fine with the type, I just think they should give us two more.
Sounds good to me, but write them a letter.
All right, well, I communicate by email, so I will email back to.
Just tell them, our recognition, our recollection is that over the, what, past four years, they've taken up four trees total in this area, we'd like to see all four replaced. But is everybody fine with a Colorado blue spruce?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, yep.
Yep. It's a beautiful tree.
All right. Sound good, everybody? Do you need a motion for that, or?
No, I think it's done.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to make the motion.
Make a motion, Tom.
Those wells filled in, Joe?
The landscape of.
What, are those wells filled in?
Windchuck.
Oh, yes, they did a beautiful job on that.
That we approved the blue spruce?
We approved, but we want some more plant.
We want four new trees in total.
Four new trees, for the ones taken down. You got all that, Jen?
Release a covenant? Anything new about that?
Just that we had a recommended amount, and we had Charlie's review of that, and 150%, and I left a phone message with Mr. Bevelakla, the owner, but I haven't heard back from him, so.
Never got in touch with me either, after I left messages.
Anytime he wants to come in and get a covenant release, you know, he can come in, I'll just carry it on the agenda, I guess. I don't know why I didn't call back unless he's dropped out of the picture, I don't know.
All right, status of BCDM Aquay Highlands Roadwork?
Nothing new going on there.
Do you think we should shoot an email to Catherine and ask her if she's got everything she needs?
The one, well, the one thing that I would tell you is that Ernie Vigila was in my office today and repeated what we already knew, was that the black plastic at the grass road entrance is all fallen down, and there's never been any hay bales put in there.
I was by there yesterday, it was like.
I don't know, whether that's a big deal or not. Well, I mean, she's the one that, she's the one that required that.
Maybe ask Catherine, see if you can recall.
Send her an email, just saying that we were wondering if she was happy with the condition of that area? Just that it's been reported to us that the hay bales weren't installed, and that the black plastic has, is failing. All right, Charlie, did you submit an invoice for payment?
I did.
Okay, so we have two requests for payment. This is for the Planning Board expense, $290 for Charlie's work at the December 19th meeting with Town Manager, Town Council, DPW Director, Town Planner, and myself. And that was regarding the, the work on the town road-taking policy that Town Council's drafting up. So that's $290, I'd accept a motion to approve that.
I think it was approved, $290 for Charles Riley.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the next one is for the South Port engineering expense, it's $95 for work done in the month of December.
I think we approved $95 for, who was it, South?
South Port expense.
South Port.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Charlie, for all the good work you do. I don't think we have anything in our packet regarding a proposed selectman's policy regarding.
No, I talked to the Town Manager at like quarter of five today, and Town Council is working on it, but nothing has been generated yet.
All right, Drew unfortunately couldn't make it tonight. Do you want me to help, do you want me to email him, Tom? About that? All right, I'll email him, because I also wanted to, to get a short list from him about the permitting requirements for the footbridge over the Quasnet River. I just want to make sure that we touch base with all the agencies and governmental agency or regulatory force that we have to, you know, touch base with to make sure, before we spend any engineering money, that, yeah, just, that if we do it right, and we meet all their things, we're gonna be okay, so.
Just going to you notice of intent with Concom.
Yeah.
Copies of that go to DEP. I'm not sure whether that's considered navigable, but if it is, the Corvage and his, it's.
Yeah, I was thinking with that.
I hope it's not.
But it's a waterway.
Be surprised what they consider navigable waters.
Yeah, it's related to the flow, not really that.
Oh, okay.
Five cubic feet per second, is that it, or something like that?
Well, it's at least that that runs through there.
Yeah.
So anyways, so I'll contact him about those two things. And that's my update on the Greenway project. The Town Administrator said that they would issue the RFP as soon as I sent them a reminder email, so I have to do that, too. Anyways, reports from Design Review Committee?
No meeting.
Community Preservation Committee, no meeting. Well, there was a meeting, but I think I've seen you since, because they recommended both, yeah, they both, both applications from the Mashpee Wildlife Refuge for their trail guide and their historic pamphlet about the refuge. Anyways, we're meeting in January. There were two people that applied to be on the committee. We told the Board of Selectmen we liked both, they sent it back to us and said, "Recommend one of the two." So, everybody's coming back for that. Environmental Oversight Committee?
The meeting's next week.
Okay. Historic District?
Don't push it, we have one meeting so far this year. Oh, that was last year.
Two year, two last year.
But no meeting.
There's nothing from MMR? Cape Cod Commission?
At the last meeting, though, you had asked me to check into the status of the mitigation funds and whether they expired. I talked to John Lippman from the Commission, and they do not expire.
Thank you.
So, if one of you on that list, it will be there until we want to spend it.
Thank you. There's some correspondence, there's some discharge monitoring reports for South Cape Market.
Just, just so you know, it came in the mail today, the November numbers for South Cape. They've gone, and you know what, they've gone back to calling it South Cape Village. The marketplace didn't work out, so they didn't want to have to change the big signs. So I'll change it next time. But the report that came back this month for November, it was 10.6.
Wow.
It actually exceeded the state limit, let alone our own, so I don't know what happened in November there, but that, I couldn't change the agenda, because it was less than 48 hours before the meeting, but we do have that report. It'll show up next month, next meeting.
Should we send them a little note? Asking why?
I would suggest that they're going to be coming in to file for a significant modification to the project. Their. They're aiming at filing on January 25th to get on your July, February 1st meeting to schedule a public hearing. So you might want to just wait until then to talk to them about it.
Yeah.
Okay. Then we got a notice from the Vostable Planning Board about a new zoning district.
Yeah, that's, we get, you know, we get public hearing notices from all the adjacent Sandwich, Vostable, and Falmouth all the time, and they're, they're always in the box here in case you want to see them, but that, this one's interesting because it proposed a whole new zoning district, a gateway something district in downtown Hyannis and so.
Downtown Hyannis, okay.
And so if anybody's interested, I have that notice, and it sort of describes what the change is.
Okay.
I don't normally list them all, because, I mean, there's usually, you know, a dozen of them for each meeting.
Yeah, what caught my eye was zoning district.
Yeah.
So, okay, they're doing more work downtown. Any other matters?
Make a motion, adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.